Ladies and gentlemen, it is now seven o'clock. The time set for holding the organizational and regular meeting of the Pennfield Central School District. The meeting will please come to order. My name is Marcia Barrett. I have been appointed district clerk of the meeting by resolution of the Board of Education. I will lead you in the pledge to the flag. Would you all rise? Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next order of business is the administration of the oath of office to the re-elected board members. Will Kathryn Dean and Carol Nasra please stand to receive the oath of office and raise your right hand and repeat after me?
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and that I will -- and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Board of Education in the Pennfield Central School District according to the best of my ability.
The next order of business is the election of officers. Nominations will be received first for the office of President. According to Robert Rules of Order, a second to the nomination is not necessary. However, if someone wishes to make a second to indicate support, it will certainly be accepted. After the nominations are closed, a vote will be taken. The meeting is now open for nominations for the office of President. Mrs. Nasra?
I'd like to nominate John Piper for the office of President.
Is there a second?
Second.
No.
I second that nomination.
Mrs. Babiers? Thank you. Are there any other nominations? There being no further nominations, I declare the nominations for President closed and will call for a vote. All those in favor of Mr. Piper for President, please raise your hand. There is five in favor. Thank you. Mr. Piper has been elected President of the Board of Education. The meeting is now open for nominations for the office of Vice President. Would somebody like to make a nomination? Mrs. Babiers?
I would like to nominate Kathryn Dean for the Vice President of the Pennfield Central School Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Nasra. Are there any other nominations? There being no further nominations, I declare the nominations for Vice President closed and will call for a vote. All those in favor of Mrs. Dean for Vice President, please raise your hand. There is five in favor. Mrs. Dean has been elected Vice President of the Board of Education. Would the newly elected Vice President and President please stand to receive the oath of office? And I have some cheat sheets if you would like them. Okay, would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of President and Vice President
and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Board President
of Board Vice President
of the Board of Education
of the Board of Education
in the Pennfield Central School District according to the best
in the Pennfield Central School District
according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Very good. Thank you. I will now turn the office -- the meeting over to our President, Mr. John Piper.
Thank you. Before we start, I just want to make a comment that for the last few years Carol Nasra has served as our Vice President and as many of you know, I've been around the block a few times in boards as a volunteer and as an employee. And I have to say, I really have never seen anyone with a passion for our students, the district, and the residents and the staff more than anybody. So I really want to take this time on behalf of the Board and the community to thank you for your two years, three years as President. So we have our agenda in front of us.
Round five.
We have to do, we have to open the meeting?
No, I'm sorry. That's my mistake.
So if I could have a motion that we approve in a second that the agenda of July 14, 2015, the --
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions? All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We also have a consent agenda in front of you. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. You also have attached, is the treasurer's report for the month ending May 15, May 2015. May I have a motion in a second that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending May 31, 2015 be approved?
So moved. Second.
Second. Any questions, board members? All in favor? We have some special reports. I'm going to let Dr. Putnam take over for that part, if you would.
Where are we? Yes, oh, okay, yeah, I can do that one.
I can do it.
No, it's okay. You threw me off with special reports. But the next piece of the agenda is the introduction of the new Assistant Superintendent of Personnel and Labor Relations. And just for the community, a little bit of background, we are replacing Patty Gallagher, who retired after 14 years in Pennfield and filling a position that somebody held for a long time, is difficult. So difficult that we actually went out twice. And I'm glad we did because the second time we went out, we found Mrs. Barbara Gregory. And Barbara's here in the audience with us today. And Barbara comes to us from the Fairport Central School District where she spent 14 years there. And was it 14? Seventeen. I'm so sorry. So trying to steal a couple of years from you. Seventeen years in the position of Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources. So she'll be able to walk into this position with the experience and the knowledge that will help Pennfield continue to grow in that wonderful spot that we know we want to be at. I just want to also mention the community, the process we put everybody through and that Barbara went through. We had screening interviews where we brought 17 candidates in and had brief interviews with them, asking a range of questions. We then had a second round where we brought back around seven or eight candidates, and that included presidents or representatives from all of the collective bargaining groups in the Pennfield Central School District, as well as district office representation. We then moved a couple more, three more candidates, through to the third round where they came back and we grilled them with even more questions on what we're looking for in a team member of Team Pennfield. And then if that wasn't enough, we brought them back again to have an interview with three parents. And I appreciate those parents who came to represent elementary, middle school, and high school and spent some time there, as well as asking questions from a different perspective of the parent and the community because this person really oversees the hiring of every position in the district and therefore has the ability to really help create a positive culture in Pennfield and continue to create a positive culture because we already have a great one. So I appreciate, Barb, that you're here. We're going to take a brief break so I can introduce you officially to the Board after we do the next one. Sorry about that. So we have to approve you first. No break yet. Everybody keep their fingers crossed.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Putnam. Board members, we have approval of the Assistant Superintendent of Personnel and Labor Relations employment agreement for 2015 to 2018. May I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Thomas Putnam, approves a probationary appointment of the Assistant Superintendent for Personnel and Labor Relations effective August 17, 2015 through June 30, 2018?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Questions, board members? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. We'll just take a brief break so we can meet our new Assistant Superintendent.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Our agenda for residents, bring forth any concerns to the Board. Do we have any visitors that have signed up? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to superintendent reports. Dr. Putnam?
I was surprised because we have several students in the audience who are here for their participation in government class, so I thought they might want to speak, but no. All right. All right, so I have just a few staff and student honors, even though it's summertime, I wanted to make sure that we don't forget. And the first is book collection. As part of Harris Hill's fifth grade talent show, students and families donated a total of 100 new and gently-used books to Habitat for Humanity. And the Harris Hill fundraiser, the elementary school raised, this is amazing, $17,500 for the American Heart Association through its annual Jump Rope for Heart fundraiser. In addition, third grader Griffin Woodside was recognized as the top fundraiser out of 200 schools in the region, contributing $2,710 to Harris Hill's total, which is really, really amazing. Nobody tell my children because I told them that I was only allowed to donate $25 and that's all they got. You get little rubber duckies for every amount of money, so I don't know what you get for $2,000, but it's got to be a lot of rubber duckies. I just wanted to point out and thank the Board and everybody who was able to attend. Wynton Buddington, the principal of middle school, who was in the audience, was also at graduation. And it's just a couple of great pictures we had, but it was an absolute wonderful event and wanted to wish, obviously, the class of 2015 well and make sure that they know that they are always patriots and always welcome home anytime they want. Donations. The following donations were made to Pennfield Central School District, and we'd like to express our deepest appreciation. In doing so, wanted to make sure the community and the Board was aware. Our first is Mr. Charles Van Buren donated two Korg AT-12 chromatic tuners and one Korg CA-20 chromatic tuner and one Bayringer mixer to the Pennfield Central School District music program. I don't know what those are, but I did speak to a music teacher who told me that this is an incredible donation and we should be really happy to have them. So I think that's wonderful and I appreciate Mr. Van Buren and what he was able to provide. Mr. and Mrs. Samuel Chen have donated a student viola case and bow to the Pennfield Central School District. As a parent of a viola player, this is also wonderful, helps out our students in need and can help the music program. And finally, Ms. Linda Chase donated 35 assorted lesson books and solos for saxophone and flute to the Pennfield Music Program. And just appreciate what that means for our students and our wonderful, very top-notch music program we have. So thank you again to those community members who donated. The next one I'd like to talk about just briefly is a bullet aid update. Recently, in the last few weeks in the paper, there was a discussion around once the New York State Senate closed up, senators are able to sort of earmark money for certain pet projects or pet areas, districts being one of those, a lot of public libraries, and in this case, our school district. And so I just wanted to publicly thank, although I've done so on the phone and via email, but wanted to make the community aware as well, that New York State Senator Rich Funky was able to secure $20,000 of bullet aid for Pennfield Central School District. So this is above and beyond what we got from New York State in regards to our school monies. And this is, obviously, anything helps, and $20,000 is a significant amount of money. We are currently working on what we're going to use that for, and when we do, I'll come back to the Board and make you aware of what the bullet aid was used for. And we'll also be reaching out to Rich Funky to probably come in and take a look at whatever that purchase is. So there are, you know, obviously lots of things that we're looking at, but again, thank you to Senator Rich Funky for that. I am now going to turn it over to Dr. Sansucci to talk about the, a little bit of the comptroller audit.
Thank you. There's, in this portion of your agenda, under reports, there are two audit reports. There's one on our tax cap calculation and then a comptroller's audit report. The summary at D has to do with the tax cap summary. I don't have a PowerPoint, but it's, I thought I'd begin with that, if you don't mind. Essentially, because it's brief and it's really just in the nature of an update. So as you know, for the last several years, last four years, we've been working in the, under the tax cap environment, and there's a pretty complex calculation that goes into ascertaining every year what that cap will be. The Board, and I know our community is aware of that, we work through it, we talk a lot about it at Board meetings. But what you may not know is that that calculation's audited periodically by the comptroller's office. So this year, we were audited three years ago and did five, and they came, but that was also an audit of the very first year of the program. And they, as well as us, were kind of feeling our way through the complexity of that. So Pennfield's turn came up again for this year's calculation. They came back, have completed that audit, and they had no comments. And no comments in this case is a good thing. It means we did it right. So I just wanted to make the Board and the public aware of that. The other piece at B on your agenda is, no, I'm sorry, at C on your agenda is an update on an ongoing comptroller's audit. So this is a more expansive audit than the one they just did of the tax cap calculation. We've been, we are, municipalities throughout New York State are all audited periodically by the comptroller. That's towns, villages, counties, the state itself is audited. Fire districts and schools as well have been a particular focus in recent years. So I just, we're undergoing our, what is our third audit at this point. We were audited in 2006 for an evaluation of our internal controls. That's essentially a look to ensure that there's no fraud, abuse, that kind of control or system sort of audit. In 2006, it was released in 2007. In 2011, they audited essentially a computer services audit. You might remember we did some adjustment to board policies. We adopted some new procedures as a result of that audit. That was personal, private, sensitive information, how we handle that in terms of ensuring that it's secure and safe in our system. That was in 2011. And now for 2016, we're undergoing another one. So we received our initial notification in January, had an entrance meeting, and the audit, and the audit field work itself began. That's been ongoing for the last several months. So they continued January, February, March, and April. So four, they were onsite for four months, one or two people, pretty much full-time. And they had an exit meeting with us on April 7. That's an informal summary of kind of what their findings are. It's a little vague because, to be honest with you, they're still doing field work. So we've, since they've left, and they left in early, probably to mid-April, they, that exit meeting happened a little prior to their departure. But they've, essentially, they've gathered information. They, at that meeting in April, they talked to us a little bit about what they thought they might be commenting on, and now they're, I call it here, the report-writing phase. We don't really know yet what they're going to comment on. We've not seen a report. We've not seen anything from them. But I do want to bring you some comments that they had at that meeting. So we don't necessarily always know what they're going to cover. They have a pretty broad purview when they come in. They can, they essentially do a risk assessment. They look at that risk assessment based on where they think they might want to do more work. They sort of delve in, and so it comes and goes as they work their way through your, through your system and through your records. In this case, they've told us that they'll be focusing on financial condition. This has been a theme of audits across the state, and I know you've seen many of those. So financial condition and reserves. And they made comments as they exited on a number of areas. So in terms of budget, and I can't offer you, this is where I'm quickly not going to be able to tell you a lot. Dr. Putnam was at the meeting. They want to see our improvement, improvement in our policy on funding reserves. They wanted to see more specificity when, in the policy itself. When we pressed on what they meant by that, the conversation got confusing, I think. Because, and I'm not being critical, but because they hadn't really worked their way through the, they knew that's what they wanted to say something about, but they haven't, they at that point haven't written the report, they haven't worked their way through the details, they haven't checked their facts. So, you know, it's, we're in that sort of an in-between phase, but they do know that they want to say something about that. As you know, our policy's fairly specific, and it calls for me to produce a document around budget and funding of reserves that's very thick and very comprehensive, and the Board receives that every year. So we refer, we require in our policy that that happen. We reference that. It gets bound into the minutes. I think their preference will be that much of, or some of what's in that report be actually in the policy. So I don't know what that'll look like. We'll have to wait and see. They talked about appropriated fund balance. We appropriate fund balance for reduction of taxes every year, but we also have conservative budgeting practices. So what they would want to see as we, as a comment would be, because of our conservative budgeting practices, we're able to continue using that appropriated fund balance. Essentially, we don't create a deficit funding situation. They will comment on that. What that comment looks like, we don't know yet. We maintain a debt service fund. So that's money that is the result of interest earnings on borrowings throughout the course of years. And we've been holding that pending the finalization of our large capital project. We're in the process, that is finalized now. We're just, I think, just within the last couple of months, submitted the last final reports on that. Our stance has been that we're holding those debt service funds pending that closure in case there's a recall of state aid. We've been getting aid through the last seven, eight years on that project, and as those final reports are filed, there can be adjustments. Once that's done, we'll start paying it out. They have concerns about the level of documentation for that and about the funding level of the debt service fund, so I'd expect to see a report or a comment on that. School lunch fund, you've seen some previous reporting on this. The standard for that is that the fund balance in the school lunch fund should be about three months of expense. We're a little bit, we were a little bit over that. We, in addition to their comment, they intend to comment on that, as I understand it. We also got a comment from the school nutrition department of SED, and we already have a letter back from them that it's corrected because it has been. As you recall, we bought some equipment in this year that reduced that, that fund balance below the level. So, you know, as I'm saying that, I'm just realizing I should tell the comptroller that. They may want to not comment on that. But at the time they made the audit, that was true. In terms of reserves, they looked at these five reserves, so bus purchase reserve, capital, workers' comp, tax, erschiarie, and employee benefits accrued liability, had no comments. So that's a good thing, particularly with regard to bus purchase and capital, because as you know, there are, by far, our largest single reserves, and they had no concerns there. In terms of retirement contribution, that's our ERS reserve. Liability reserve, which is a reserve we hold against unanticipated lawsuits or claims. And unemployment, which is a very tiny reserve, it's about $140,000 that we hold against spikes in the unemployment claims. They're concerned about the funding levels of those. What the, that, they just told us that. I don't know what that comment will look like yet, so we'll wait and see. But at this point, with that, you know what I know, and so I would say that what's the next step? Well, we'll receive, they've done their work, they've been here, they've done their work, they're writing the report. The report gets written locally, and then it's sent to Albany where it's edited and sort of rewritten for consistency and for their purposes. So I, we really had anticipated receipt of a draft audit by end of August, just based on really sort of conversations with their auditors and really some guesswork, to be frank. They don't tell you when to expect it, but based on where we thought they were at in the process, we thought we should receive a report by, draft by August or September. Once we receive that report, we'll have 30 days to review it, to question it. They're not interested in releasing a report with factual errors or with things that are just plain wrong. So they give us that chance to take a look at it, to review it, to correct it, and to provide a response letter. So we'll do that, and then they'll issue the audit sometime subsequent to that. So that issuance of the audit then will require Board acceptance of it. A corrective action plan will come along with that. We'll have some, whatever if, comments there are, we'll have a corrective action plan to address them. That's included, that can be included as part of the audit or can be issued separately. My preference is always to make our response, that 30-day response, to include the corrective action plan because I think it's just tidier. It makes clearer to the public what you intend to do. And then at some point, probably far subsequent to that, it's published by the, by the comptroller. We're obligated to post it on our website, to a legal notice. There's lots of notice and publication requirements, but that'll be coming. We did receive an email today or yesterday from the auditor asking about this year's year-end financials, and just in the conversation or in the exchange of email, it led me to believe that in terms of our schedule, August or September might be a little aggressive. I think actually we might be looking more at October, November for us to get a draft audit. And I say that, and it could come tomorrow, but that's the, it seemed, based on the comments, that that's kind of the schedule that we're on. So that's what I know. Just wanted to bring you and the public up to, up to speed. We'll, I'll bring you certainly more as we learn more. Any questions? Happy to-
No, and Mark, thank you to you and your staff. I know personally how hard it is to have individuals camp out for the better part of a year in your office, constantly questioning. But also, you know, for our residents, this is a very important piece. We have numerous audits that Mark and his staff have to put up with, but those are the checks and balances of government with school districts and other municipalities. So again, thanks to you and your staff, and I'm sure we'll get a great report.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
Mark, when you present any kind of correction plan, does that have to be, does the state say what they want done, and you say, okay, this is how we'll correct it? Or do you say, do they make a comment and you say, this is how we can correct it, and then they have to approve or disapprove of that?
Well, you can, they don't typically respond to your corrective action plan. But you have, I think we have an obligation, obviously, to pay careful attention to what they, to what their response, to what their guidance is. They'll offer guidance in the, in the document. And then, because certainly, you know, it's well within their authority to come back and take a look at what you did. And in fact, you know, when, in each of those audits, and in this one, for example, one of the very first things that they do when they come in is take a look at, take a look at their previous audit, what the recommendations were, what your corrective action plan is, and did you implement that corrective action plan? And that's always a loop back around, and will be it to you if you failed in that. I mean, if you promised to do something, you have an obligation to do it, and they'll check on that. The other thing that they also always check on would be recommendations from any other audit that you've had. So we have independent audits by Ray Wagler, we have audits by, internal audits by the Rotenberg Firm. You know, we've had IRS audits in recent memory, retirement system audits. We're, I mean, we are looked at a lot. We're, I mean, we are looked at a lot. And, and all of those findings are, are part of that review. They're going to look at that and, and look at those recommendations and look at those corrective action plans.
Okay, thank you.
And we have a separate audit for federal funds-
Correct.
That we receive as well, so-
Correct, and, and extra classroom activities.
Extra classroom activities, okay. Any other questions? Thanks, Mark. I'm going to hand it over to you again in a minute for the reorganization items. But I just wanted to mention, this is a part in our agenda where the board reorganizes, and certainly this is required by state law, but it's really putting, setting forth resolutions that allow us to operate for the next 12 months as a board and as an organization. So, many of these items are involving contracts, appointments, and other actions that we certainly will not read every one of them, but I will have Mark just highlight these briefly, and they'll be up on the board here for everyone. And there's a total of 47. And at the end, we'll take any questions in regard to that before we approve those.
Thank you. Yeah, there are actually 49.
Forty-nine, oh, great.
In, in part because we added one. So, as you, as you point out, this is required, it's, it's required that it be done in the first 15 days in July, and, and it is called the organizational meeting or the organizational agenda. I, we've always referred to it as the reorganizational agenda because we prefer to believe we were organized before. But it is a new board, new officers, and so we start the year by establishing sort of a set of rules. And those 49 agenda items that you have in front of you are essentially the rules or the standards that we, that we'll work with as we go throughout the year. So, I'm not going to go through this, I'm just going to touch on a few of them. The first and most important, they're all written out in your agenda, I'm happy to answer questions on any of them, but what we've tried to do in the past is just point out some key ones that we think the public might be particularly interested in, and mention any that have changed. Because, for the most part, these don't change much from year to year. Some do a little bit, levels change, you know, dollar amounts and so on, but for the most part, they, there is a, a consistency from year to year, as you would expect. So the first and most important one, this board always readopts the code of ethics, a process for reporting concerns and fraud, and the Medicaid compliance plan. That's the first agenda item, it's the first thing you do in your first meeting each year. And Marcia Barrett will email that resolution, along with the code of ethics, that process, to every employee of the school district. So, tomorrow, we'll all in our in-basket have, be reminded essentially what the rules of the road are with regard to ethics and reporting, and, and an insurance process that, that enforces that, as well as the Medicaid compliance plan. So that's important. There are, as you go through this, lots, a list of advisors, firms, officers, the school attorney, tax collectors, people who are responsible for things like the maintenance of, of change funds in the schools, the dollar amounts of those change funds. All of that is in, is in this agenda. We authorize the treasurer to sign checks, petty cash funds. We authorize the superintendent to approve budget transfers. We authorize board members to attend workshops and seminars, and so on. As you can see on the next page, it, it goes on. I would point out the ones that really have changed. At number 19, it authorizes the business official to issue tax refunds up to $3,000. So, in the course of business, during the course of the year, small, if you, an employee, or an employee, I'm sorry, a resident might go to a small claims court, have their assessment reduced, and, and depending on the timing of that, a refund might be due. You've authorized me in the past, that's court authorized, it's been authorized by the County of Monroe, so rather than require us to, us as an organization to take it back for approval to the board, you've authorized me to make refunds, those refunds up to $3,000. That keeps people from waning, frankly. More than $3,000, that would be, typically be much more significant. It would be beyond probably small claims, and it would be one of the tax serciore claims, one of the bigger ones. And you do approve those, I bring those back to you. I'd want you to see those. So that's how we've established $3,000 as the limit, but it is increased from 2,500. So last year was 2,500, it's been that for quite some time. When I checked around in the county, it seemed like $3,000 seemed to be the limit, so we've decided to, to bump it up to that. At number 38, let me get there, there's a resolution that establishes reimbursement rates for independent eval, for special education hearing officers and independent evaluations as part of the special education process. Last year, in mid-year, this board made a slight change to authorize the superintendent in special cases to authorize higher reimbursement rates for independent evaluations. So last year's reorganization meeting agenda was slightly different than what the second half of the year was. This brings that into compliance or into consistency with the way we've been operating for the second half of last year. And then finally, at 49, so last year we had 48, this year 49, the, the superintendents authorized to approve IEP changes prior to the board meeting. So the way we've worked variously, and it depends on what the change is really at the, at the CSE meeting, but in many cases, an IEP change will be recommended at that meeting, depending on the board's schedule and timing. For example, tonight in the consent agenda, you approved IEPs and IEP changes. In some cases, those changes in services have already been implemented. And so we wanted to recognize that and give the superintendent the authority to say, that's okay. In those cases, pending that board approval, we'll provide the necessary services. So, 49 is new and authorizes that. So are there, there will be, for next year, I already know there will be two additional ones, I'll tell you about those in just a second, just in foreshadowing, because I'll bring those to, quickly to a future meeting. But before I do that, are there any questions about the ones you have?
I do have one question.
Oh, you do? All right.
Because I, I think we have a potential error, so I just wanted to touch base. So, on page 14, the asbestos designee, and this says nothing, this, it's number 45, and all it does is set the standard workday for appointed employees. And it's a list of employees where, for New York State Local Employees Retirement System, we have to say what their, what their standard workday is.
Correct.
But if you look under the asbestos designee, I believe it's Alan McNiff, who was named earlier in one of the pieces. And I, I don't, but I figure just to try to keep it consistent, I-
Oh, let's see.
Because back on, on page five, Alan has been our, but George Corbett is our district P O D coordinator.
Yep, you're correct. And I'm trying to, so it's, George Corbett is the head mechanic, and, and, but Alan McNiff is our director of buildings and grounds, and is the asbestos designee. I just want to make sure there's not two different ones that I need to be, that we need to be concerned with. With the board's approval, I think let's, I'll bring it back to the board if we need to re-correct it, I think, but I think we should change that standard workday resolution to George Corbett, if you-
Or to Alan McNiff.
To Alan McNiff, rather, rather than George Corbett.
It was on page 14, number 45.
If that's incorrect, when I, when I delve into this, I'll bring it back, but I'm fairly confident that should be Alan. Thank you for pointing that out.
I, you can thank Jim, who passed it to Marcia, who passed it to me.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate, no, I'm glad somebody's looking.
I'd rather, I'd rather, you know, have it on a, on the public forum, because the board's going to vote on it, so just they're aware of, of what that change should be. And I appreciate the board allowing us to come back if we do take a look at it instead of just making that change, but we'll make it.
So, would you like us to put Alan in there now?
Yes, please, Alan in there now, and on page 14, at the asbestos designee.
Okay, so let's get a motion first, and a second, that the above organizational item 7- A1 through 7- A49, with the amendment of the asbestos designee being corrected to Alan McNiff, be approved for the 2015-16 school year.
So moved. Second.
Second. Questions? Yes?
For the parent representative in number 47, are we waiting for the school year to start to contact the parent advisory board to get a parent representative?
Yeah, absolutely. Same with our teacher representative, which is a to-be-determined right now. We want for the school year to start to reach out to those parent groups.
Very good.
And in those, I would expect that we bring back the resolution as that gets finalized.
Thank you.
Okay. Good question. Any other questions? On the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Motion is approved. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. If I could just foreshadow a little bit, I, I will be bringing to you two additional resolutions that, that we're still working through, they're brand-new toss, but it's come to our attention that we're going to need to specify an additional standard workday resolution. This is a result actually of an employee retirement system audit that we just underwent. So, a standard workday resolution just specifies what the workday is for employees where it's not specified in, specifically in a contract. So, you have an eight-hour day, a seven-hour day, a six-and-a-half-hour day, what's a bus driver's standard day? Bus drivers probably a perfect example. They're all different, right? Depending on their runs, their routes, what they do. But for the purposes of reporting to the retirement system, what's the standard day? So we need to, to, we don't have, we certainly know what we report, we have a system for that, we've been consistent, but what we don't have is a resolution that says this is what that is. So we'll be following up with that in, in the very near future. And also, for the purposes of reporting, for the Affordable Care Act, we need to establish a standard workday for coaches. Because we are required to track time now for everybody, because under the Affordable Care Act, a full-time employee is considered someone who works 30 hours or more in, in that, in the weekly period. So what's a coach? And we'll need to figure that out. Again, doesn't have anything to do with their salary, with what they're paid, with what their position is, but we need to report, and we need a standard for reporting. So I'll be bringing that to you, we'll adopt, hopefully you will consider that and adopt it, and then next year in the system, we'll have 51.
Thank you. We look forward to giving those-
Thank you.
-resolutions. Okay, we're on page 15 on your agenda, under facilities. We have some facilities changes there that you've had in your pack, and a chance to review it. The above change orders have been reviewed by and are supported by architect Vic Thomaselli, project manager Gary Huffman, clerk of the works Alan McNiff, and assistant superintendent for business Mark Sansucci. If I could have a motion in a second, that the change orders as described above be approved?
So moved. Second.
Questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have a revision to the Bay Trail change order 101-002, which was the Landry Mechanical Contractors, Inc. The SED cover sheet for Bay Trail change order 101-002 Phase 1 was issued in the amount of $442. The change order certification sheet was typed to read $422, and this amount was authorized by this board on January 13th. The change order certification has been revised by SEI Designs to indicate the correct amount of $442, and we would like to have a motion to that effect with a second, that the correction to the change orders 101-002 as described above be approved?
So moved. Second.
Questions? All those in favor? Thank you. Under financial items, the BOSI summer school transportation contract for the school year 2015-2016, we have a contract in the amount of $96,113 was received from the Board of Cooperative Educational Services for Transportation provided Penfield students for summer school during the 15-16 school year. If the board approves, the following motion is in order. If we could have a motion in a second, that the Board of Education authorized the signature of the president on a contract in the amount of $96,113 from the Board of Cooperative Education Services covering transportation provided Penfield students for summer school during the 2015-2016 school year. The dollar amount is an approximation, the district will be billed for the actual number of students transported and the aids used.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion in a second, any questions on that? All those in favor? Thank you. Our school physician contract, Cindy DeVore is our school physician, and she has been for a while, as we know, several years. It is also necessary to prove her contract terms and conditions for the 215-2016 school year per the terms of the 2012 Request for Proposal, or RFP. The contract calls for a payment of $32,250, a 2% increase over last year based on the PAC contract. Dr. DeVore's contract runs August 1st, 2015, to July 31st, 2016. If I could have a motion in a second, that the Board of Education authorized the signature of the superintendent of schools to negotiate final terms to this, and enter into a contract with Dr. Cindy DeVore and the district for the 2015-2016 school year?
So moved. Second.
Second. Questions? All those in favor? Thank you. Code of Conduct for New York State School Board Members. New York State School Boards Association has a code of conduct for school board members. School boards may approve it yearly as a reaffirmation and show of our support for the state code of conduct. If I could have a motion in a second, that the Board of Education approved the New York State School Board's code of conduct?
So moved. Second.
Second. Any questions? And just as a clarification, this, this governs what we do as board members, and our code of ethics, which as elected officials were, were held stringently to. All those in favor? Thank you. Emergency plan approval pursuant to the Commissioner's Regulation, Section 155-17E3, the district held the required public hearing for the emergency response manual at our May 26, 2015 meeting. It has been available for public comment for 30 days and must be adopted by the Board of Education. Did we have any comment?
We did not.
No, okay, thank you. If I could have a motion in a second, that the emergency response manual be approved as presented on May 26, 2015, per the Commissioner's Regulation, Section 155-17E3.
So moved. Second.
Questions? All those in favor? Thank you. We're now in President's Remarks or Presentations. First, I'd like to thank the board for your support, and, and congratulate my Vice President. And again, thank you to Carol for all of her work, and I really meant that because I really have not seen the type of passion that she gives, and I hope you will continue to give that passion as a past president. We do have one item under new business, and, or two, actually, it's two resolutions. And the background on this is, our board has been very active as we need to be in the legislative arena, and we will continue to be more active. And our legislative representative to the New York State School Boards Association and the Monroe County School Boards Association is our board member, Mark Elidge. And after several discussions this year, Mark brought forth to the board two resolutions, which we're going to introduce tonight. And the way the process works, these resolutions, if approved, will be sent to the New York State School Boards Association and to their resolutions committee. And the resolutions committee is a group of board members from across the state that decide which resolutions go to the overall board, voting board at the convention in October. So I'm going to just take these one at a time. The first resolution is resolved, that the New York State School Boards Association support legislation that officially grants all public schools the same exemptions from the New York State education law and/or regulation that have been granted to charter schools. The background on this is that, over the years, we have seen, unfortunately, a lot of things being granted to charter schools that we believe, and the citizens of New York may believe, are not in the best interests of New York State, and they are also allowed to be exempt from certain state laws and regulations. And this resolution would just ensure that a fair playing field for all students is consistent across New York State. So if I could have a motion in a second, that we forward to the New York State School Boards Association Resolution Committee- Boards Association Resolution Committee, Resolution Number One.
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Okay. All in favor? Thank you. Our second resolution is resolved that the New York State School Boards Association support legislation to record an appropriate waiting period before school districts must implement new education laws and/or regulations. This really defines, from all of us that have been in Albany, you'll have a piece of legislation approved that, one, it says there's no impact to the taxpayers of New York State, which generally is not true, or it's an impact to us, and then it, and it kicks in 10 days or up to 30 days after the governor signs it. And as we just saw through our 49 reorganizational items, we have to determine what these laws are and to implement them is sometimes absolutely very hard. And a reasonable waiting period that we would like to consider would be no later than July 1 and the following calendar year, or 90 days after the New York State Department of Education has given their comment. So this could have a great impact on a lot of things that impact us, and we believe this is a great resolution to put forward. So if I could have a motion in a second that Resolution Two be forwarded to the New York State School Boards Association Resolution Committee?
So moved. Second.
Questions? All those in favor? Thank you. And again, thanks to, Mark Elidge was out of town and couldn't be here tonight, but he brought these forward and he'll remain our legislative contact on our various committees. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? And then I'll get back on new business, additional new business. As you remember, each year we make our committee assignments, and this encompasses the Monroe County School Boards Association Committees, Executive Information Exchange, Labor Relations, and Legislative, our New York State School Boards Association Legislative Representative, and the various subcommittees of this board, and the community committees, which happen to be Audit and Facilities, and Health and Safety. And I would comment too that this board had a strategic planning retreat, and as we try to, every year we reviewed many of the elements of what we do to make ourselves more efficient as well. And so I'll remind the board, if you could send your requests as to what you would like to do, you know, within the next 20 days. So, because I will be contacted by the Monroe School Boards Association and we can get ourselves in order. Does that sound fair? Is there any other business to come before this board? Yes, ma'am.
This past weekend, I was up in Lake Placid, New York, and my husband and I took a nice stroll through the village, and at one of the hotels, they have roof gardens. And there was a big, huge sign as to why this was a good thing. Just thought I'd mention that. Just saying.
Thank you, Barb, and let us, let the record reflect that this board continues to strive towards the effort in investigating rooftop gardens as we move forward.
Well, one of the big things that I noticed in this big reason why they're doing it is because of maintenance. There's less maintenance on the roof because of these gardens. Just saying.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else to come before the board? If I could have a motion in a second that the meeting be adjourned at 8:04 PM?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Good job. Good work.